Just for you. I figured that was him. First up.
Hey, if you guys can't hear me, tell them we have a mic and I'll try to talk for them. Uh, this is the time to set aside for the visitors and, uh, please, please stand your line.
Hello everyone.
Just for you, just for you Lisa.
Jaylee, Jaylee, Jaylee by Melanie. Jamie wants to speak after me and I'm telling her right now she wrote everything, she talks away to her. Uh, I wanted to congratulate, I'm kind of going to go down, I sent her one email about some points that I wanted to address today. Because I feel like the community does not think that you are addressing these issues or thinking about these issues. And, um, so I wanted to congratulate all the board members on their successful campaigns this year, from being you on the board and, um, and everything. And, um, let me remind them that the community is watching and expecting some bold changes from you. Kids are a priority in this community and maybe people are going to stand up and, um, act like they are the main priority for this community. Um, there are four main issues that I've kind of addressed in my, um, email and I want to just quickly go through them and tell you just so people know that people, that someone is asking about this. The first is the mask issue, we all know how it went last year and we are, um, hoping that this year we can get out from under the mandate of the mask. I know that there's several school districts in the state of Illinois where it's stated masks are optional and I will be with the school board who comes with that information also. Um, we know that there are other instances that are way far more dangerous for children that have COVID. Um, and that we know that, uh, if you immunize your staff, there's no reason for the children to have a mask. There's plenty of support out there, you remember research journals and stuff that are actually saying that these masks are harmful. I was reading one today that said that carbon, um, carbon dioxide levels when kids wear a mask only for three minutes are six times higher than the state limit. So, when we put these masks on these kids, it is not safe. Um, and we know about the social issues that go along with the little kids wearing their masks. Um, we know about the dirty masks and the germs on the masks and, you know, really masks are ridiculous for children. So, I want you guys to consider this, I want you to research and look at the facts when you make the decisions. Um, immunizations, um, I think it's very scary that we're promoting immunizations to children when it's not that paid group and it hasn't been studied on. Um, we know children do not get seriously ill from COVID usually unless they have chronic, terribly chronic and serious health conditions. Um, so I want you to consider, um, not mandating, uh, immunizations or going along with that ridiculous rule if they come after it. Because, um, my kids will not be immunized and there's going to be a lot of people who are not immunizing their children. Why? Because my kids are strong, healthy kids. And, um, I've seen a lot of kids with COVID and I've not seen one get anything worse than cough. And I know there's some kids in our community that got, um, under, got some issues from, um, from the, uh, from having COVID. That's kind of, that is weird, but just like anything, it could be a little bit of stress or anything like that, you still have side effects from the virus. Uh, also there was a study that just came out that said that there are three people that are dying in the United States or from, um, COVID. Two people are getting sick and dying from the vaccine. So, we really need to look at this, there are studies here, this study came out from the Journal of America, the Journal of, um, the new, the Journal of Medicine, it was JAMA came out with that one. Um, these are, these are serious things, this is stuff we don't want to expose our kids to if we don't have to. Um, and we don't have to. Um, there's things coming out, there's something coming out called critical race theory and I don't know, I'm sure you guys have heard about it, it's something that's on everybody's radar. Um, from what I've read about it, um, and what people are saying and I'm kind of frightened, delved into it to really get an idea of what is in this. I have in my home, white kids, black kids, Asian kids and then a Mexican kid. From what I understand, my only kid that's racist is my wife here. And that's what they're teaching with this critical race theory. I don't like it, I don't want my kids to think that they are being discriminated against because of their color. Um, and that's exactly what this teaches them. I don't want them to think that they are going to get special privileges because of their color. I don't want them to look at other kids and see their color. I don't like critical race theory, I think it's a racist, uh, teaching. And I would hope that you guys would stand up and say, "We are not teaching this garbage in our school." Just like a lot of, uh, school districts are doing. It'll come out and I don't know if it's came in or if anything has showed up, um, to be taught this year. But if I see it on my kids', uh, work or I see anything being taught like that, um, I would be in here and I would be in here with a lot of parents. Um, sex education. There is a new sex education program that's on the governor's desk right now. I don't know if he signed it, but I can bet you he probably would. It makes you teach or show me pictures in appropriate language, I've seen the book, I've seen this stuff on, um, what is being proposed. Teach us inappropriate language about sex between a man and a woman and homosexual acts also. I don't think any of you think this is appropriate, this is taught to grade school children. This is not where we should be teaching our children. School is not for that. School is for math, it is for science, it is for history, it is for reading, it is not for this. This is something that needs to be taught in the home and not in school. This better not show up on my kids' desk either. The people in this community are looking for all of you to stand up. They're looking for you to, for you to be bold and say no to this stuff. These things should not happen in our school. There are plenty of people that will be willing to protest these decisions if you don't stand up to this stuff and do the right thing. There will be an organized pushback. This community is sick and tired of this foolishness and wants our kids safe from the harm of masks, immunizations that are not needed, racism, and immorality. Let's stand up and show them that you guys agree with this stuff. Let's let them know that you're actually talking about it and having a discussion about it. Thank you.
Anybody else care to speak?
Hello. I'm fast hawking, trying to slow down a bit for you, but I can't promise to hear you, I don't feel able to understand everything I say, so I'll try to look up. Dear school board, hello, my name is Jaylee Simpson, I am a junior changing two, this is my eighth grade. Even though some adults disregard children's opinions because they believe they don't know what they're talking about, in this instance, I believe that a child's wish might be different. I understand that the purpose of wearing masks in a school and its school-sponsored events. I understand the purpose of wearing masks in a school and its school-sponsored events, but I don't think the opinions of students in Jaylee's ears. As a child of that, in a mask deployment, my already compromised student ability, that does not even mention any preposterous expectation that the school sets for athletes to wear masks while playing their sports. Masks, mask戴着 during sports games are not enough. It is also stated that masks in schools are mainly to protect teachers. But all teachers should be vaccinated at this point and if they are too afraid of going to school, they may defy better members of the available school staff. I would also like to expose the fact that lots of teachers take off their masks to speak because otherwise they're unable to be heard. So, the masks aren't meant to be protecting the teachers who are being compromised by those they are allegedly protecting. Thank you for your time, please consider an optional mask policy.
Thank you, Jaylee. Anyone else with diverse work ethic? State National Communications, come to the car.
The first thing that I'd like to announce is we've got a state's track silver medalist, Chris Cherry. Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Would you like me to speak? Would you like me to?
Want to talk to us about it?
Yeah, so, uh, Chris Cherry Senior, he just, uh, competed at state for track and two mile a mile. Uh, he got second place overall, he ran the, his fastest mile, uh, two mile time is, uh, nine seventeen. Uh, his fastest four mile is four nineteen. Uh, you think about that, if you're running the four hundred meters, you know, that's a little bit over a minute a lap, which is generally what most of the guys sprinters do anyway. Uh, he's able to do that for eight laps as well, so it was a very exciting day for Chris, uh, temperature was up there. He's raced, uh, the same group of guys throughout the year, in fact, in Shelbyville, Illinois, little tiny Shelbyville. The guys that knew Chris Cherry throughout the state of Illinois came to race him at Shelbyville and it was an enormous event. And these big Chicago schools, there were, uh, twelve of them that came to Shelbyville, Illinois. Two of the coaches came to me and asked me where the heck they are because they'd never seen anything like this. And he just developed a good relationship with these, uh, running group throughout his last year as a senior and made great friends with them. It was a perfect day at state, he came out second and he got seventh in the mile overall, so fantastic career for him. He's now going on to U I S and he's going to be competing there, uh, this fall in cross country, so congratulations to him.
Um, there's new information that the board members filed, it's a short stat, there's a pretty wide incentive and it talks about a resolution. So, I'm going to ask the board president if he would modify the agenda that when I explain this to first, I wonder if he will ask him to do. Um, this came across my desk today at eleven oh two, but I've been working with local superintendents in the area regarding local control as we climb onto this pandemic. Um, right before I walked down there to the meeting about four twenty, state board of education sent out an message to this, they do not make help rules and they don't have help guidance for schools. And it's kind of like, when we have something to tell you, we will, at this point, we don't have it. Um, but the superintendents in this part of the state are asking for school boards to pass a resolution so that we have local control and absence of the state making decisions. Um, what this is, this is not the board saying, "We will not follow the guidance of the state board once it comes out." But we are saying that we would like the ability to make decisions at the local level and the absence of the state's ability to do so in a timely manner. Um, as Lisa pointed out earlier tonight when she spoke, we are in the middle of July, we've got one more meeting before we open school in the fall. And, um, you know, just some different factors regarding what we're doing. But, uh, there is a, a listing of superintendents, my name is Adam Tudes, um, and I'd like to make the recommendation that I would request this resolution. And, um, the resolution discusses basically the climate, how to handle that, I don't read the entire thing, uh, we'll get to that part in the, um, agenda. But it talks about all of the things that we're doing here, um, to help students not become sick and stop. Contact tracing, shield testing, vaccination requirements, masking requirements, one-way hallway, social distancing strategies, additional cleaning, air quality ventilation improvements. As you know, our district, we have three rooftops basically all right now, we're doing a hundred percent change here, it's a significant, um, amount of money, we'll talk about that later in the meeting, that we've invested for air quality improvement. So, we've done measures, in my opinion, above beyond what the state requirements are and this resolution discusses that. So, the House of Chairman, he would, um, amend the agenda to have a resolution. The resolution states, uh, resolution to Governor J D Hunsford requesting local control and immediate guidance for COVID nineteen mitigation measures twenty one, twenty two school.
I would like to see local control completely, but I think there's a lot of things, I think there's a few places spoken about, uh, special groups, box, dietary. That's the resolution here, but, um, we kind of have to do with the process sometimes, but, um, I would like to add this to the engine that we're kind of going to do in three and four maybe, three A. We discussed on it tonight, as you know, the state board, we got this, this point, we're going to do this. So, can I have a motion to make this item three A and, um, alright, thank you, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Okay, we'll add that and have discussion on it after the last slide, just three A.
So, Tricia, Sarah? Thank you.
You have a communication. Okay, we'll move on to the whole business, uh, mental health building, uh, we just talked about that for twenty fourteen, twenty four months, far. Tricia, Jamie, Sarah, you've got all the conversations, everyone look at this building here or do you need to say anything?
Yes, yes, sure.
Okay, we're done.
We can do it, Freddie, partner, maybe if you guys are comfortable, I've got my key.
No longer are doing consultations and everything. They're working with Memorial Hospital now. And so their use for it is, they don't have any use for it anymore. And I do know that the hospital was not interested in it. Because it's right next to the hospital too. Kim Moore told me that with the new building, they do not need the space. So we initially looked at it and thought maybe this was a good idea. But then the pandemic came up. And I know that we were worried about whether the state was going to pay their normal amount or whether we were going to be in real big trouble. And so we put it on hold. And now that we have three new board members, that's, I know seven before or four, but we wanted to show that everybody, all the new board members who had a chance to get involved with us too. Now that the pandemic is ready to go away and it is possible, I think that we should be considering it now.
Okay, I have several questions because I'm not aware of what was done in committee prior to this time. And several comments that I've heard, concerns that I have included one purchase price that we would be paying. Has there been a health, life, safety inspection of that building? Okay, and so again, then, just a question that I have is what's the estimate for renovation of that building? It's been empty for how many years? You know, a couple of years. Was it heated during that time? Do we know? Okay. Also, the status of the roof, if it's going to need to be replaced and what will be the cost for that? And you know, and looking at the public perception, we spent money to move our district office from where it was to East Wing and spent some dollars working on that. And so one of the things I understand is that that could be a consideration. Also, I get the piece about the property being valuable in the future, but I also recognize that we cut down, shut Stonington West and South schools. So that's kind of a hard sell for me. And then what's going to be the annual cost for maintaining the building? And we have the great heating and cooling, those kinds of things. And I would like to see what is the actual plan? I heard several things mentioned from that. We could use it for a training center for parents. We could use it for district offices. But I would like to see a real structured plan aligned as to what we can say on the paper.
The move, the district offices from the expressive building to here, those expenses and that purchase year is free. So now we're going to save. What we're going to use it for, I don't necessarily have the district offices there. That's what we originally thought. But now we're looking more at the training center for parents and it's rather issue type of a lack of proper, yeah, just training. But it also gives the building to use that. The cost of renovations vary depending on what we want to use it for. Tricia, do you have comments? Mr. Walters kind of hit it here up, so I want to ask you here because I think you look down.
Sure. So I think you've already explained between two views, we looked at it before. I think those are legitimate concerns. I think we should, I know we've kicked it back to committee and back and forth in committee. I think those are, you know, we should follow that. That's the root cause, I think. But it's the, all those things that she's, you know, friends with you. I think that I personally look at it, I think we get it for the price that we want it. We're going to, we get parking spaces, we've talked about. Our keenness issue of doing that, we know that. We're landlocked, it would be nice to get additional land in that area. There's a lot of benefits, I think there's some pros and cons. I mean, there's a lot of benefits to it. I don't think we should just dismiss it. I think we should continue to go into it.
As a new board member, I have not seen them inside of the facility, but I do understand that's an excellent location. And that is a plus, but I also have some concerns about it. I agree with Brendan that before I would be a broker, I would want some definite, more definite plans of what we're going to do with this. I just feel like to support this and, you know, questions from the committee. I feel like we have to have more definite plans of what we're going to do with it and what the cost is, total cost is going to be for us, not just the purchase price, but for the renovations. So those are my concerns with it. But I realize it's a great location for us, but I still have those concerns.
I agree with all of the comments. I think that everyone has said, Parker, to me, who was the last one that speaks my line? But I do want to know the cost. I still understand it is to the benefits, right? I know there are some benefits, but it will outweigh the price that we're going to have to pay. I know that we had talked about on purpose room or different things on the building committee. Would that take away from future projects that we have? So I would recommend grants as far as narrowing down the cost, what we would use it for and just to make sure that that would outweigh, you know, if I said that wrong, the benefits would outweigh the cost, it would be beneficial to the district.
Mr. Walters, have you looked at the building yourself?
I just, I just, I just, I just had a long, I'm going to say.
Yes, I have, we. I'm sorry.
Just one more time that after I toured the North School Memorial and just, I guess for us to spend money on this facility and seeing our grade or other schools where we need to do work, where there's overcrowded, there's not room for all the classrooms and everything like that. I guess I just, I guess I struggle with us spending money on this facility. I mean, unless we come up with some type of plan for it that, I mean, I don't know, I mean, you know, we talked about parent training, but I just see the more, you know, there's more, more things than we've done at the other schools that would be costly.
Mr. Walters is good.
Okay, yes, I did look at the building. We did an initial walkthrough as far as getting on the roof, knowing about it. We didn't add it. It's a, it's a short, sound building. Depending on what anyone would need it for, yes, it definitely would need updates here and there, but that's those to say for anything. Heating and cooling probably would need some addressing in that building, especially if you're going to revamp it into different areas. But all in all, it's a slant foundation, as are all of our buildings except for this one. And structurally sound, yes. The beams were in a good place, insulation in the attic was adequate. I believe the gentleman who we did the walkthrough said that the roof had been updated a few years past, but I didn't really ask the exact date, but. Land wise, again, that's, you know, we surround it on two sides. So if you were ever going to do anything in the future, the land, yes, would be valuable.
This is the kicker I've said for a long time. And I'd like to get off the fence a little bit. So how about we do this? Tonight, if I can just get it okay for everyone to like pursue and see what the price would be now to save the fire, to save the price. If any board members to the time they want to, to see it, give an illustration, kind of know the concrete plan. Not exact cost, but just this appropriate use, use it for. And put it on the August 4th date, yes or no. That way, in that time, we have time to figure out what it's going to cost us to put it in. This is what we're going to use it for and give everyone time to decide. And not drag this out indefinitely, like we're carrying that. I'm sure the, the middle health board will like to know that too, so. Is that, is anybody okay with that? We can give an approximation, it's not going to be exact. Yeah. So the new board members that are here, originally this is probably 15 years ago, they talked about Memorial, which is going offline, absolutely, the office is in Memorial. And they released the top floor to Cameron, because I don't know if Cameron's over. That was an idea and then if that happened, we were going to launch the work and expand the job by over, that's what this property goes to like. I don't know if it's still, that's how long we're going to buy it. But that's, this property versus, almost as soon as it wants to go, that's what our cost would be, the property we're paying. But is everybody okay with that time frame, I'll try to think that price and.
When we initially looked at the building, we were thinking about having a board there too, which Steve said is going to be pretty extensive because we had to take a lot of rooms and re-support the roof and the whole bed. And it looked like it would be pretty, but we weren't using it for administration or for board meetings. The cost would be drastically reduced from what we, when we initially thought.
I'll just sort of run the tape just now, it'd be something. Since I started trying to ask, I'll start with these. If you get the information together, it will make a yes or no decision in our list. Tricia, right? Okay, so that's what we'll do, so it'll be on page in August, yes or no, we'll have firm numbers. Thank you. Onto new business. Item one is a consideration of a resolution for allowing some money transfer for working cash, which is about 70, capital projects, which is about 60. Any comments on that?
Yep. So this year, we, we really have a lot of money coming in through grants, through federal grants, COVID grants, bonding money, and a lot of projects on the docket. So when you end the fiscal year on June 30th and begin the next fiscal year on July 1st, a lot of things can happen and they can happen in either fiscal year. And so initially, when we closed out the June 30th and had the meeting for that budget here, we thought we were going to keep things in fiscal year 21. But in looking at things, we're moving into fiscal year 22. And so in order to move money out of working cash, working cash is a rainy day fund and that's where the dollars were placed. We want to transfer money so that we can do building work. Our building work's already approved and it's already planned. And the budget doesn't change, adjustments, funds. Now, one of the big concerns that we have is we're trying to use federal grant dollars so that we can, we can hang on to our working cash dollars and our bond dollars to the maximum amount. And so this year, just today, we got a message that the S R 3 grant came through. And between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock today, it came in and it went out, so it's still on hold. But we were told those dollars were going to flow. And we were, we can use those dollars across fiscal years. So that's why this is trickier than usual. But what we're here tonight to do is to pass a resolution so that we can fund transfer working cash dollars into capital projects. So the capital projects are already approved. But the caveat, the capital project money is once it goes into that fund, it doesn't transfer out. So we don't want to transfer all the bond money there. We want to leave it in working cash so that we have some flexibility in it. The dollars that are coming through S R 3 are a little over $4 million. And so some of those dollars will potentially take care of some building work that we also are going to do. The 3 H V A projects that are currently underway are a little under $5 million. And we were able to pay 1.5, 1.4 million of that work out of our S R 2 grant. We're going to utilize some of S R 3 to pick up a couple of the other ventilation parts of that project. But what's going on today is we want to move $9 million on a resolution, 9 of the $14 million out of working cash and into building. And that still needs some funds in working cash, so we have some flexibility.
Thank you. Want any questions on that, I see right now.
One more thing, we are, I don't want to say in trouble with interest rates, but they're absolutely pitiful in working with the bank and, sorry, I mean, your work at the bank, and this is not a claim on the bank, it's the, it's the market and the industry. But this past year that we just got through, we were getting 0.17% interest on our investments. And so as you recall, when we looked at our budget closeout for fiscal year 21, we were down on revenues because of interest rates being so low. We just were told as of July 1st, our new interest rate is 0.12. So it's even more pitiful than what it was last year when we were losing. So that's another reason, we weren't in a hurry. Working with these builders, right now we have an Ameresco invoice. We have the liberty of, not liberty, but platitude, if you will, of paying that invoice before June 30th or after June 30th, or July 1st, rather. So initially, we wanted it June 30th, we had an invoice of, and we were planning on that. But we decided to hold on to the money as long as possible. And we were hoping to be able to pay it in August. That's not going to happen, we need to, we need to pay it a little bit earlier. But we're doing the best we can with very difficult circumstances.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm just confused. When I was looking at our budget summary that we passed in June, it looks like there's already $14 million in the capital projects on that page and only $1 million working cash. So the question is, if that's accurate, how are we making that move from working cash to capital?
It's not been moved. That was just our plan, we've not moved it yet, we'd like to move some tonight.
Okay, so it's not already in that fund?
No, not already, no. So we, we had to work with the State Board of Education to see how they best advised us. And they said, it's not a big deal, it's the same money in the district, it's your bond money. Just talk to the board and put it where you need it and put it and pass the resolution. So as you take a look back historically, this district, the first week of July, resolutions are always passed. This is just a fiscal budget here, ending in beginning action.
So the budget, it was shown there, but hadn't actually been put there yet.
But then whenever, before we were on the board, there was a resolution to get money in February? The $15 million on to working cash?
Their type of bond was put in working cash, wasn't it?
That's where the deposit came, one needs to make deposits, that's where, that's where it comes in. That's the type of bond we sold.
Right, and it haven't, it haven't been, is that what you're saying?
No, no, when you bring funds in, whatever type of bond you sell, that's the fund that they go into.
Working cash.
So working cash, so that's why we have a fund.
So are they in that fund now? Were they in there now? Okay, but it's not reflected on the amended budget.
We've got a budget here to show you in working stickboard and how to rectify that. And you know, if you take a look at the first page, I'm side by side look, that's what we're here to do tonight. They said there's not, I don't know, maybe it's just a construction. Maybe we put those bonds in each other, kind of, we do that one. So it's the same dollars, it's just moving that to capital projects.
What, correct me if I'm wrong, once we move it to capital projects, that money's locked.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't.
That's why we haven't moved it before, where they, where they did when they said they would, because once we move them over, it's completely locked, they can't come out of that fund.
And so.
Yeah.
It's a little bit is weird that we did.
When I did the amended budget, I was expecting to get the money sooner and do our resolution and get everything moved over. We got it later than expected, so we didn't get the resolution. So we just went ahead and left it in working cash until we got the resolution. So the first amended budget that we did, I had it showing where we're putting the working cash, or putting it in capital projects. We didn't, we went ahead and left it in working cash. So I called the State Board of Education, explained to them what was going on. They said, not a problem, show the school board, but it's still in working cash. Then we're going to move this capital projects after the resolution. So now I'm asking for a resolution. But as ending of F Y 21, it's still in working cash.
But I don't recommend transferring the entire bond because of the, we need some flexibility. We're still not through this pandemic and some other factors that are, regarding, kind of, looking at it. And that's a very important thing right there, that, you know, there's not true that this is really.
Question?
My question is on the resolution here. So I initially understand about, you know, what, what's been done, so we actually want to pass a resolution for that. But going forward, so like number two here on this resolution. So I'm just, I guess I, my question is, so going forward, it's, we're passing, this resolution is saying that the, or President, Secretary, Treasurer, or Director already would be able to move these funds without, without approval or approval? Is that over quite a while?
On my end?
Yes.
Okay, so that's done every year. So what happens, there's different rules and different parts of transferability. The, the, the funds that allow inter-fund transfers have flexibility rules where you can move money from one to one.
So also we have a transportation money, we need to move money in there. We can definitely, definitely, especially without, without resolution.
So you're saying this, saying this year, this resolution to do that, that's something that's done every year?
Yeah, that's standard operating. Those are inter, interrelated funds that have flexibility. The capital projects is there to, it's a, what's its difference, it's a track.
Okay, but this includes the working cash to the capital projects.
Working cash is a rainy day and that funds from there can go out to others. And the funds can then build into others. That's why we don't want to have over saturated. We want to just utilize what we can in that fund.
Okay, but you're saying that, that those listed here can transfer, can transfer from the working cash to the capital projects? Is that the resolution? Right, through, through the passage of resolution? Just the nine million?
Yeah, just moving one million to.
Oh, I see, that's my question, like, like going forward.
We need to think what we're doing right now.
Okay. I initially understand the nine million now, and my question is like, going forward, you could always, you could, you have the authorization then to transfer any money to the capital projects.
Yeah, that's not, it's with interim loan through the year, that the building fund cannot, once funds go into the system. So if you were to move more money into, from working cash into building, you have to pass an additional resolution. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Okay.
Can any type of capital projects, we're going to, we'll be doing that as the works are done. We, we did our progress in a three-year, with that line, in a three-year progress. The first was the H V A, because you want to know what one section people are in town to do it, to get another rate. H V A took, will tear up your rules if they're trying to do some things, there's a chance of damage. Second phase, which will be next, so next to rate, was the rules. And we'll get those done because Mr. Walters has taken the pictures and told us it's time. And the third one is eventually coming on the buildings.
We'll be hearing that rules very shortly, that talk, that last year. And they're starting to do, like, a big process.
Instead of doing almost one thing, then we broke up into three, three items, three separate acts. It's going to take probably three years. And that way, we didn't tie ourselves to that completely. So when that does, we'll have another resolution out of working cash into the building. Because if we put it there, it's there for, heck, using credit cards. Everybody understand? Right this way.
If we're talking about the second resolution, Walter.
Let's do, let's do the first, we'll do first with first. And then we can go on to the second one. Or if you want to, before you open up, let's, like, let's do the discussion on the second one. We can go ahead, go ahead for that, if you have a question on the second one. That's just normal inter, departmental transfer of money. That's done every year.
So I do have a question, and I don't know if this impacts the particular resolution or not, just, one of the bulletins I saw today was about school code on Section 17 2A, transferring money between different funds. And, and the sunset, that provision, moving boards to make inter-fund transfers done accordingly. Are you familiar with that? And so does that impact any of these resolutions?
There's, there's some classes that you can't do.
I don't know. There's some classes that are restricted that you can't do at all. This is just a resolution. If we get extra money from General C D in the education fund, we need to supplement transportation or we need to supplement building or, you know, this is just regular supplemental, you know, transfers that we do every, every year. And the other resolution, the first resolution is for working cash to capital projects. Now, working cash to capital projects, yeah, you need a resolution to do that money. The second one is only a resolution for general transfers that are every year.
I just, I, I just don't get enough on this, but I still don't understand it completely. So the budget that they have given us to get the saving, does that have that money in working cash to transfer into the capital project?
It shows the money in working for the capital projects. Okay, so then we decided we aren't going to move it over to capital projects since we didn't have the resolution on file immediately, so we're going to leave it in working cash. Well, the State Board of Education, this is the government saying, yep, that's not a problem. We all are just going to have working cash, you have a resolution next year, you can do the money. And you don't have to have a hearing or publication and at the end of the newspaper, just let your board know. This is where we land on working cash.
Yeah. Let's move on with this item one, we have a motion to approve. Brian, second. Tricia? About the vote called on item one, a consideration for the moving of, for the working cash to the capital.
Mrs. Patterson, Dr. Meisner, Mrs. Marburger, Mr. Gersch.
Yes, motion carries. And the item two, the consideration of the resolution to allow inter-fund transfers, that's a yearly thing. I have a motion to approve. Ms. Marburger, second. This man asked, what call vote, Jim? This is the second one, this is the number, that you asked about the, the transfer between funds separately.
Mrs. Patterson. Mrs. Patterson. Dr. Meisner, Mrs. Marburger, Mr. Gersch.
Yes, motion carries. I must be working off an old agenda, you may just find out, so I think that, my mind doesn't have the consent, listen to the personnel sheet. So if you want to review the personnel, Dr. Gregory?
So we have several personnel items that have come up. The first was resignations. Alex Simbalki, Assistant Harpey, football coach, Taylorville High School, effective June 30th. Caleb Worsham, ninth grade football coach, Taylorville High School, effective June 30th. Cynthia Webb, your student council, Taylorville Junior High School.